First order of business we have is to congratulate Supervisor Culp for the election to the Board and Judge Gill is here tonight to swear her in.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Culp.
United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor in East Fallfield Township with my oath.
Would you like to count these things?
I think it's going to be temporary.
I'm glad to hear that.
the January 4, 2016 reorganization meeting of East Fallfield Township.
Second.
All those in favor?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Steve Herzog as the 2016 Board of Supervisors Chairman. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Pomorski as the 2016 Board of Supervisors Vice Chairman.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
No, not yet, I didn't. Aye.
Pass.
Did you vote? We need to have...
Who voted yes and no?
There's three. I mean, I didn't want to vote for myself, but you can write down. I mean, Joe did the last one. You can write down. Yeah, everybody. Okay. Do you find Joe wants to...
No, this is question.
Appointing a township solicitor. I make a motion to appoint the firm of Land Macralane PC for the 2016 year at a rate of $200 per hour for general municipal legal services and paralegal services at $125 per hour. Second. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Any other questions or comments? This is Scott.
I would oppose the appointment of Land Macralane for two reasons that I have been given in the past six months. One being, the firm promoted a waiver of a person who wanted to chop down numerous trees. Our ordinance calls for the replacement of those trees and the solicitor moved in favor of cutting down the trees and waiving that ordinance or rule to plant new trees. And then, secondly, at another time when I addressed that the township was not adhering to second-class code, Mr. Pompo didn't even have a copy of the second-class code with him, so I gave it to him and I read it. And then, the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, who is a lawyer, put the police in my face and said that I would be removed if I continued speaking. So, for those two very strong purposes, I would not wish the Board to appoint Land Macralane.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Steve, I'm going to make a motion here. I make a motion to appoint the firm of Sienna Bellwar and Andrew LLP for the 2016 year at the rate of $195 per hour for general municipal legal services and paralegal services at $120 per hour. Do I have a second? Yeah, this, I mean, my first question is, for savings of $5 an hour, why would we replace our firm right now with Sienna who has... who does not have the history that Land Macralane has with us? I mean, to me, if we replace Land Macralane and Sienna for $5 an hour, we're probably going to get double the bill because Sienna's going to be contacting Land Macralane for questions they may have regarding things that we've done in the past.
Good question, Joe. I might be able to help you answer that, answer your question. I spoke with Eric Brown. As you know, you hired Eric Brown, who's currently working for the township for union negotiations for the Public Works Department. That firm does handle land development and it's one of the unique firms that handles union negotiations. We'll also have a police contract that we're negotiating with where this firm can help out. This Board also talked about doing a handbook and this current firm, Sienna, has stated they can help us with the employee handbook. They are coming in at $5 worth of savings true versus Land Macralane, but they also provide training. They said they'd be able to provide training free of service for the most part for our employees, which they'll be given a certificate in legal areas which will go into their file. And it's just a competing rate. They are working within the township at this time and it's just a move to basically incorporate one attorney firm that can handle everything for us versus outsourcing to this firm already for numerous things that we've discussed or we're already acting upon.
Yeah, but, I mean, have you been happy with the service they provide to us?
They provided the exact service that we've asked for. They have stated that they are not here to become the sixth board of, a sixth supervisor on the Board of Supervisors. And as far as their interactions with Land Macralane, they do have engagements with them on many levels. And Eric said for the most part to gather anything from that firm is not at a substantial cost. They do other dealings with Land Macralane, so they're able to get anything that they necessarily need from them. There isn't a lot going on before the township at all as far as any legal battles other than what Sienna is handling for us right now with the Public Works Department.
Yeah, but that's been, I think we would agree on that. That's been a certain roller coaster ride.
Not because of the law firm.
Okay.
Law firms doing exactly, I mean, when the Board asks the attorney to show up, they're going to show up. And if the Board doesn't ask the attorney to go home, I don't blame them. They're in the business of making money. That's part of their engagement as what they do for a living. So, if the Board's just going to keep inviting them and not sending, you know, and sitting with them for hours, just like in anyone's personal life, they're going to have a bill presented to the Board. I think maybe we should have, we should be more prudent about when we're inviting them in versus having possibly an executive session to discuss some of the issues amongst the Board. There's been times when there's only one supervisor present when this law firm shows up and, you know, I'm just as guilty as not being there as well for some of these meetings.
So, I, yeah, I, yeah, certainly. I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
It's a strong firm.
Here's my thing. I, yeah, I think Land's stronger, but I just don't, I don't know that it makes sense for the savings of $5 an hour to switch. I mean, I'm very comfortable with JP and Vince. And again, I don't, I don't, I realize you said Eric Brown said that there won't be a lot of, you said there wouldn't be a lot of legal fees for going back and forth with Land?
Well, I mean, there's nothing wrong with before the Board. I mean, the only thing we have right now is really the Public Works Department.
Yeah, but every time something comes up from tenured, you know, Scott Forum comes up, he's got to contact Land Macralane and we're paying not only Eric's fees, we're paying Land's fees also.
He just said they need to acquire the folder, that's it. It's not uncommon for, you know, anyone to switch attorneys and attorney will, you know, as part of the courtesy, you know, I'm not, you know, they would turn over the files to them. I mean, Sienna does have a working relationship with Land Macralane. Land Macralane actually recommended Sienna to us. That's how Sienna came to be.
Yeah, for the contract negotiations, I understand that. Sure. But it's, I think negotiating a contract with the road crew, with the police department's different than having the solicitor represent, represent the Board of Supervisors.
They also, they handle...
And I realize it's one of the things we do.
Yeah, they handle Wallace Township, they handle other municipalities, they also, they handle land development, they handle everything basically that Land Macralane would, including union negotiations and union contracts. And that's why they were recommended by Land's law firm for us.
Right.
So, there is a savings there. I mean, we also will be able to control the solicitor's costs, which this Board has never done. I mean, the Board of Superv, the solicitor serves according to the second-class township code at the will of the Board of Supervisors. Basically, our policy has been anyone can basically contact a solicitor and they're on the phone talking to them. Who knows if it's a repeat, a question by two Board of Supervisors members or if someone in the planning commission's asking a question that the Board of Supervisors hasn't asked. We need to develop a policy in as far as how we contact the solicitor, what questions are being asked and see if we can schedule those questions to be possibly asked at a public meeting versus anyone's getting on the phone with the solicitor and racking up a legal bill. I mean, we can do a lot to control costs, not just at the $5 level, but also a policy within this township to control legal costs by who has the ability to contact the solicitor outside of an emergency.
That would be, yeah, that's true regardless of course, whether it's Sienna or whether it's Land.
Well, this is a, maybe a new day for some things. Here's a chance. I mean, if we're going to be in police negotiations, if we're, we need to get a handbook finished. I mean, Sienna has told us that they're able to help us with both of those parts. And they also handle municipalities. Why not just put it all into one instead of paying two different, basically attorney firms for two different things? Here's a chance to save, I mean, I know it's not substantial, the $5 on both parts, but it is a strong firm as well demanding its costs and, you know, it's a chance for, you know, the township to make this change. I understand, I completely understand your concerns, but, I mean, we can bring it to a vote.
At the cost though, I'm not sure at the services level since it's a service and not a purchase, but though, things like that have to go up the bid. I mean, we didn't put out bids last year for a new firm.
Yeah, we didn't, we never posted this. You don't have to.
We don't.
Is that...
While you're still here, is that true?
I don't know. I know for certain, we get both...
Nobody contacted, I mean, obviously you contacted Sienna, but, I mean, who gave you the discretion to contact Sienna?
I had discretion just of myself to bring that up. I made a motion before the Board, it hasn't passed. I made a motion before the Board. I don't have control of this Board. I just made, I mean, one motion failed that was posted to the Board. I'm making a second motion as an alternative. We did put the solicitor out for bid and we had all kinds of rates come in and without any reasoning, we selected the same firm.
It doesn't work?
Well, yeah, yeah. I mean, you have every right to choose who you want to represent the township for legal representation. The second-class township code doesn't say it has to go up the bid. And, you know, I'm making the motion. It doesn't guarantee that's going to pass, Joe. I just made a motion, it's on the floor and that's it. I call for a vote.
Just to answer your question, I, there's no law to, you know, the supervisor sits right under second-class township code, serves at the will of the Board. That's a will of the majority of the Board. It passed, it has gone up the bid. That was a procedure last time. I think there was an interim, Land Macralane stated it's an interim solicitor while that passed. That was a passed procedure. One thing I'd just correct in terms of supervisor, in terms of employee handbook, we do have staff and it is something that we routinely handle. In terms of the depth of practice, I, you know, I defend my firm, of course.
And please, JP, it's not personal. I think you're a good attorney.
Right. And if there's, that's a very specific issue raised, I just want to make sure that I say on public record and discussion that our firm handles. And I'm also not sure if the $5 difference is a difference, you know, the words, whether you could say with Land Macralane, was the difference of $5 or it's a change.
Right. It's not necessarily on that, JP. And they do bill in the same increments concurrently as Land Macralane. So, they are billing per contract or, you know, whatever that division is, it's the same as Land Macralane.
So, you were saying if I, if I went back to Vince and added sort of $5 lower rate and that we make it as $195, that would make no difference?
Right now, not for me, not for the motion I put on the table. I mean, only because of the things that are going on right now for this township, we might, you know, possibly save in certain ways with Sienna, given that we have a Public Works Department contract going on, maybe as their representation or as a solicitor might save us some money. And then, we do have a police contract coming up this year that your firm has represented us twice and, you know, and we're aware of the outcome of some of those things. So, I just have a motion on the floor. Again, I'm just one supervisor making a motion. So, any other questions?
Is it a conflict of interest to have the same solicitor and for like the Public Works or anybody?
Yeah. If Mr. Sanchez, if the vote is that you go feel the firm, is Mr. Sanchez released the remainder of this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I realize this is a reorganization meeting. Would it be possible to table us to the next meeting to make the motion to change so we can have a solicitor here at all meetings? Some townships, I mean, do not have the solicitor present. I mean, everything's pretty much cooker, cookie cutter going through this whole thing. Everything's, it's just a reorganization meeting, everything's spelled out completely. In fact...
Well, I would, I'd prefer to have a solicitor here, especially if the budget's reopened for several reasons. I mean, it's not a bad idea to table either because we can then go back to Land Macralane and see if they'll, maybe they'll stay at $195 and then, to me, it's a no-brainer. It's already a no-brainer to me, but it makes sense and you're paying the same amount of rate.
I think there's a motion on the floor. Let me vote on it.
What's your reasoning for going to Sienna, Chuck?
Pretty much in the same vote. I don't see having two different solicitors when we have a negotiation on a union contract. Why should we have to go outside, hire another entity to come in and settle it or we can do something, have somebody in-house just handling it?
It's not in-house, it's, we're also doing your contract and now it's just a different firm. So, negotiating a contract for a road department or police department is a lot different to having legal representation for Board of Supervisors. To me, making, you know, saving $5 an hour is not anywhere, it's not a significant amount of savings, first of all, when you look at where the budget is. And second of all, again, I don't see, I, and again, maybe I'm wrong by saying this, but I don't think that anybody's been real thrilled with the service they provided to us already.
That might be your opinion, Joe, but at the same time, when we did have lower...
That was your opinion too, Ed. We talked about this.
No, it's not my opinion. No, my opinion about, about anything going on there is that the Board of Supervisors aren't, I mean, Joe, you're entitled to what you're saying. I understand. I mean, I'm not offending you or anything. But at the same time, I do know, I do know that I watched the majority of the Board put the solicitor out for bid. And then, when we did get lower bids that were like substantial, you know, $150, $160, somehow a firm put their application in, overnighted it, and then the very next day withdrew it. Nothing, nothing strange there. So, we had a lot of things go on and then all of a sudden, we select the same firm. You know, so, I don't think the price, as far as what I saw the last time with the Board even matters. I mean, so, it's not $5, $50, if it was $100, I don't think the Board at that time was going to make a change anyway. I'm making, I'm just asking for a vote on this motion. It is, it is a strong firm. I believe in what I've seen from that firm as far as them pointing out problems or things that need to be corrected and, you know, possibly falling on deaf ears, but at least they're, they're not, they're not going to act like a sick supervisor. And I'm not implying that the current firm is, I'm just saying that their job...
You're not implying, why'd you say it?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just, well...
I think you are.
All right. Fine, Joe. I mean, Joe, I don't, I mean, I just put a motion on the floor, that's all. I mean, just asking for a vote, that's all. So, can we call a vote?
Any other questions?
Okay, sure.
In the back there?
Yeah, I have a reasonable question. Since this is a reorganization meeting and you have it scheduled out in this paper, you have it up to us, why is the solicitor motion where you're going to remove legal representation happening before everything else that's on this list? That should be kind of at the end of the more important decisions, don't you think? And the idea to table it and then perhaps put it up for bid as a suggested, what's wrong with that?
I didn't schedule the, I didn't make the agenda list. I'm only going...
That's why I'm raising the question.
What's that?
That's why I'm raising the question.
You bring, I mean, you bring up a question, I mean, quite frankly, we've had reorganization meetings where possibly no one was here as far as representation. It's happened before. I understand the budget reopening is on there, but it doesn't mean that the budget's voted on tonight as far as any kind of changes or anything. You know, there could be a motion to reopen the budget, it might fail and, and nothing's, nothing's straight out of there. Remember, it has to be advertised for 20 days. So, if there was any changes or an agreement on that, say at the next workshop, we have 45 days to do that, it still has to be advertised to people. There's not some kind of like, I don't want you to feel like we're making some fast move here, you know, in regards to that because it still needs to be advertised.
It's your decision.
I think, I think, well, the motion failed. The motion failed for the current firm. And would you give me, would you give me like the thought that maybe the internals of the township, of any of these supervisors except Carroll being up here, maybe the supervisors might know a little bit more of some of the internals going on here than possibly the crowd? And, and that's why you elected me. You elected us in general to oversee things. And of course, if I came into your place of work, I wouldn't know everything going on at your work as well. I mean, there's certain things I can talk about here, other things I can't. But I'm doing my best job to navigate this as far as what I've seen and that's what I'm doing up here. This, I mean, this firm could easily be changed three months from now, but we're making a change here as far as the motions on the floor. That's all.
To answer your question, from my point of view, most of us did not know that this was going to happen. It is what, so...
Yeah, I had no idea.
I think two of you did.
No, I didn't and Steve, you didn't either, right? Did you guys all know this was going to happen?
So, that's why it's where it's at because, you know, that's normally where it's at. Mr. Redd.
I just wanted to bring up one thing. I think just you, Steve and the other supervisors not here. The solicitor was here a couple of months ago and you cannot have a township meeting without a quorum, all right? In other words, it has to be three supervisors in order to have a meeting.
That was last year.
And that wasn't the case. Steve was here and Mark Toth.
That was a workshop. That was last year.
Did I speak? I'm speaking right now, Joe. In reference to, it was only two supervisors. You cannot conduct a meeting. The township funds the spending meeting. The firm was here. He should have notified the other two supervisors at that time you cannot conduct a meeting without a quorum. And of course, you can check the date and other supervisors came in and made a complaint about it at a fallen meeting. You also got a bill from that law firm for a meeting that should not have been in the first case when you don't have a quorum. The other thing I would say, and I've been here quite a few years, all the organization meetings, and I would say, you know, once the motion's put on there and of course, all supervisors have a right to voice their opinion and the residents have a right to voice their opinion. But I just think in order to get on with this, see, I've been solicitor and we've talked about putting it out for a bid and maybe a lot of the folks that wanted to hear, they had put it out for bid. They got about 30 different law firms to put in here. And I know particularly, the one law firm dropped down $5 hours because he was $5 more than one candidate. And the candidate, you know, we're talking about land firms, they dropped down $5 in order to be competitive with the others. And you can look back to there and I'm sure you'll find all the solicitors that put the bids in now for the township. And I happened to be here at that meeting. So, the Board at that time decided they would go with Land. Now, the motion's put on, Mr. Chairman, on the day now and you gentlemen can argue all night. I would like you five to make a decision tonight in reference of solicitor in order to go on with the rest of the agenda, which is appointing people to the other planning commission, to zoning commission, a historic commission and some of the other departments are important too. I happen to know, I get a lot of the meetings and believe me, the solicitor's not always there. And that's what we hire you gentlemen for, to make the decision. Only time you can have a solicitor if you know something's on the agenda that's going to cause for a legal response. That's the only time. I know townships or bigger districts don't have solicitors at their meetings. And if you gentlemen know, you get the bills. We don't get the bills, but the bills come in and I don't knock any law firm. They charge you from the time they leave, wherever they're located and how long the meetings last. And $195, $200, whatever, that's what you're going to get charged for. Meetings usually run $600, $800.